Mr. Boyle, here.
Mrs. Boyle.
Yes.
Mr. Pyronellen.
Here.
Mr. Giannakis.
Here.
Mrs. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Sesselberg.
Here.
Mr. Casio.
Here.
Mr. Panese.
Here.
In accordance with the terms of the Sunshine Law, adequate notice of this meeting was posted in all school buildings, the administration buildings, borough clerk's office, police headquarters, public library, four newspapers, and tapped into on January 6th, 2022. Please be advised there is no smoking on school grounds, inside or outside at any time. Please silence all electronic devices in pursuit of District Policy Number 0167. Each statement made by participants shall be limited to three minutes' duration and no participant may speak more than one from the same topic.
Thank you. Any added additions or petitions? Seeing none, comments from the board on proposed resolutions? Seeing none, can I have a motion to approve part of the amendments?
You'll move second.
Discussion? Both call please.
Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Mrs. Boyle?
Yes, on the 14th Committee of the whole and the regular, and no on the executive session.
Mr. Giannakis?
Yes.
Mr. Pender?
Yes.
Mr. Sesselberg?
Yes.
Mr. Casio?
Yes.
Mr. Panese?
Yes. Superintendent's report?
Thank you, Mr. Panese. We will have our monthly report from our High School Student Council President, Sarah, when you're ready.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for welcoming me on the dais. And this month moved by very, very quickly. And I'm so excited to introduce what we've done in the past month at our school. So to start off, we had our homecoming event, which was very successful. The dance was on September 30th at the Grant's Centurions. It was an amazing call with a DJ, light system, and photo booth, along with beautiful flower arrangements provided by Moens from town. The students had an amazing time. And I just wanted to thank everyone who contributed and came together to make this night a great time for the students, including the administration, the rest of student council, and the town members who gave in and recommended everyone that helped that evening. Secondly, we had our pep rally on October 14th. South Plainfield had our annual Fall Season Pep Rally for the whole school. We recognized the seniors and the captains of our fall sports teams, as well as showed our tiger spirit that night. We had a number of games and activities that each class representative competed in. And thirdly, Thursday, October 20th, which is tomorrow, the Model United Nations have their annual SP Month conference in August school year. Our executive board has been working very hard in training our newer delegates to debate and come up with solutions to pressing global issues, such as the disaster management and risk preparedness. And fourthly, our Passionately Pink Club. This is the month of October, of course, and this is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And at SPHS, we play a very heavy role in raising awareness for this cause. Every Friday, the whole school is encouraged to wear pink. There are raffles and tickets for prizes. And the Passionately Pink Club sells bracelets and ribbons, which are then donated to the Breast Cancer Research Foundation. There is also a rack for all the teachers and the administration to receive a beautiful flower arrangement. And we're working hard to raise awareness for breast cancer. And fifthly, we have our Rotary Student of the Month Awards for September. It was Michael Green and myself. And October, Shannon O'Flaherty and Maddie Piper. And we had a little poll on if there are any suggestions from the students or the parents to, in regards of what we can do and the community can do to help make South Plainfield even better this year. And we had a suggestion of Project Graduation, and they wanted to bring that back for the seniors this year. So I sat down with Mr. Casio and Mrs. Gee and Mr. Boscolo. And we decided to work on a revised version of Project Graduation. This was obviously a suggestion from parents and of previous students that went to South Plainfield, and they really enjoyed it. So we are working to come up with something even better for our seniors at the end of the year. And that is all I have for today. So thank you very much for having me.
Thank you, Sarah, for the very comprehensive report. You do a great job. And Sarah didn't let the public know that we also met and talked about planning for the Day of Service. So Sarah and the executive board is also a big part of that, along with all the other student councils in the school. So amazing job. Thank you, Sarah. Next, I'm going to ask Mrs. Curlo and Mrs. Gagliardo if they'll come up to the podium. And Mrs. Versanello? Tonight we have a presentation from Girl Scout Troop 65008 and their troop leaders. The troops, the troop made worry dolls to be placed in the comming rooms throughout the school district for our students to use. The Girl Scouts really thought about what our district needed, and I think these dolls are an incredible addition to the comming room. Whenever you're ready.
I also want to introduce, this is Lena Lilia. She's also one of the other troop leaders. Both of us are the troop leader, but the girls can come on up. They have a little speech they would like to give. Should they give it at the microphone?
Sure, yes.
Okay, come on up, girls. I'll let Mackenzie go first. And Julia.
Hi, we are Cadet Troop 65008. My name is Mackenzie Livia and I'd like to tell you about a project we completed about worry dolls. Worry dolls are popular in Guatemala and originate from an ancient Mayan legend. They are usually handmade dolls, and they are given to children to rid them of their worries.
Hi, my name is Julia Nova, and I'd like to tell you more about worry dolls. Children whisper their worries and troubles to their dolls and put them under their pillow or near their bed at night. The worry dolls take the children's worries there while they sleep so they can wake up in the morning feeling better.
Hi, I am Julia Nova, and we wanted to do this project for our bond to war because we want to help kids feel overwhelmed. Many students go to speak to the youth council of their schools and talk about their worries and anxiety. We wanted to help those students.
Hi, I'm Chloe Natus, and we would like to give these dolls to guiding counselors in South Plainfield Elementary School in grad school. These counselors can give these worry dolls to children who are struggling and in need of a doll.
This doll is a little friend. It has some worries that we need to do too. With your bigger worries and your struggles, this doll can help you fight your fears. Put it by your bed at night before you turn off your nightlight. It will take your worries while you sleep. And this is a must for you to keep. Love, Troop 65008.
These are close, right? My family is going to get down very, very soon. I love.
I keep this.
That's awesome.
Can we take a second?
I think that's fantastic.
Oh, they just.
You guys do. Wow, that's just phenomenal. That's just great. I think that's a great thing, and I think it's a terrific idea. Whose idea was it?
No, I'm going back.
I think it's a fantastic idea. Great, great thought, guys. Great idea. You know, you have so many ideas. It's real funny to talk to somebody. It's a great idea. You have to hide the superintendent. I think it's the girls.
Thank you so much.
Good job, guys. Great job.
But it is going to be a hard one. All right, we also have this evening. We'll be honoring our district faculty and staff members who have earned tenure. We have put together a video in their honor. So, Mr. Casio, when you're ready, I'm going to ask you to turn the lights out. And then I'm going to ask, when the video is over, if all of the faculty and staff members that are here will come up to the podium so we can walk across the podium.
Good evening. My name is John Fiskell. I proudly serve as the high school principal here in South Plainfield. And it is my honor to recognize four teachers who have earned the status of tenure in the South Plainfield School District. Before I say anything further, I would like to go ahead and congratulate everyone else who's attained tenure this evening, and like to welcome you and look forward to your continued success here at South Plainfield Schools. We have four teachers at the high school who have attained tenure. Their names are Steven Balzer, Tim Jackson, Sue Osborne, and Margaret Phillips. Each of our four teachers have left, already left a lasting mark on our school. First person I'd talk about is Mr. Balzer. Mr. Balzer is a member of our social studies department, and throughout his time has taken on new electives, actually written and brought curriculum in to expand our electives throughout the high school, while also serving as a coach, both for our spring track teams, our winter track teams, and our cross-country teams. Mr. Tim Jackson has been a part of our English department over the last four years, has been integral in helping us in post-pandemic especially, with setting up some new types of classes for students, volunteering every step of the way, and working with us and his department members, and moving forward our English department every chance he gets. Miss Sue Oz, Susan Osborne, who is a member of our special education department, has been so, so incredible with our LD program, working with our special needs population, as well as now serving as one of our class advisors, and working just everything she's been a part of, putting her all into everything that she does. Last but not least is Margaret Phillips, who has, after spending some time at the middle school, came up with here at the high school, and does an unbelievable job working with our students, as working with our math program all throughout the high school, helping students within those classes, just being a constant presence, and also bringing her expertise to those classes as well, which is, which is a rare thing, and we're very grateful for. So in closing, I'd like to congratulate everyone for attaining tenure. We're really proud of everything you've accomplished over your four years here, and can't wait to see what other success that you bring to the school district moving forward. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. My name is Sam Vieira. I'm the principal of Roosevelt Elementary School. And I'm here to congratulate Alyssa Erico on receiving her tenure. Congratulations, Alyssa Erico, on receiving this honor. It is well deserved. Ms. Erico has done a tremendous job here at this elementary school. She is a special education teacher. She works with our LLD program, our PK and kindergarten for second grade. And she does a wonderful job. She's a great person, great person to be around. She's a lot of fun to come to work with every day. And she really cares about our kids. And she's a terrific advocate for her students. And she fights for them, and she fights for the underdog every single day. On top of being a phenomenal teacher and a great leader, she comes to work and puts in a long day for South Plainfield Public Schools. Not only does she do work from eight to three every day, but the minute that bell rings, she's on a field, in the gym, on a bus. She's our student council representative for our school. She is involved and committed to our school, our district, the way she should be, the way every staff member should be. She epitomizes what we want in our teachers and our staff members. She's all in for us. So congratulations. It's well deserved. You deserve all the respect that comes with being a tenured teacher and staff member here at South Plainfield. And as the great Alabama Crimson Tide football coach said after winning his first national championship, I want everybody here to know, this is not the end. And that's what it is for you, Alyssa Erico, upon your tenure. This is only the beginning. You have a long and storied career here. So many more years to come. Congratulations.
Hi, everyone. I am Bob Bowman, principal of Grant School. I have the pleasure of introducing two teachers who will receive tenure. First up, we have Mr. Nye. He is a physical education teacher at Grant School. He's a valuable presence inside and outside of the classroom. Mr. Nye coaches girls soccer, spring track, and is a former wrestling coach in district. He can be counted on in any situation and defines professionalism. Students know that he'll provide support and be there to support his students in any way possible. During his time at Grant School, he has gone above and beyond to come up with creative physical education classroom lessons that include all students. Grant School is lucky to have Mr. Nye as a physical education teacher. Congratulations, Mr. Nye. Next, we have Mrs. Sabino. Mrs. Sabino is a dedicated professional, and is evident inside and outside of the classroom as well. Mrs. Sabino has a unique ability to form special relationships with her students and her classes. This relationship allows for the students in her class to achieve their goals, knowing that Mrs. Sabino will be there every step of the way. Mrs. Sabino is committed for always keeping a positive classroom environment and maintains this environment not only in her classroom, but throughout the school. She's a true professional and maintains a highest level of professionalism at all times with colleagues, parents, and anyone she encounters throughout the day. We are lucky to have such a dedicated teacher, Mrs. Sabino. Congratulations, Mrs. Sabino. Congratulations to all the staff who are receiving tenure. Take care.
Hello, everyone. I'm Shannon Colucci, principal of Franklin School. Tonight, I'm pleased to introduce Ms. Marie Lanza to the board as one of our faculty members receiving tenure during this meeting. Ms. Lanza is a dedicated special education teacher who fosters strong connections with her students, making each one feel valued and loved. Some words that might be used to describe Ms. Lanza include caring, committed, and compassionate. As a fourth grade in-class support teacher, Ms. Lanza works with her co-teacher to create an environment of acceptance and inclusion for all students. Student needs are met with understanding and support in Ms. Lanza's pull-out resource section, where she uses Wilson reading to provide individualized special instruction to help her students achieve their personal best. Ms. Lanza's strong belief in social emotional well-being is evident. She models embracing new challenges and personal growth in the classroom and embodies these principles as evident in continuing her education, pursuing a master's degree in applied behavioral analysis at Rutgers University. At Franklin School, Ms. Lanza is known as a trusted colleague, an advocate for all students, and a valuable member of the faculty. Outside of the instructional day, she also serves as co-advisor for the student council and Day of Service, modeling goodwill and the desire to better Franklin School and its community for the students and staff. Congratulations, Marie, on receiving your tenure. Franklin School is lucky to have you as part of our team. Congratulations to all our South Plainfield School District faculty, tenured recipients. Keep up the wonderful work. Have a good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Dr. Tanzi, Mrs. Maliska, members of our Board of Education, and our community members out tonight at the board meeting. My name is Dr. Hydock. I'm the proud principal of Kennedy Elementary School here in South Plainfield. I have the distinct honor of recognizing one of our staff members, Catherine Winter, as she has just obtained tenure status in our wonderful district of South Plainfield. So let's start by just letting you know she is actually in her fifth year here as a, as a teacher. She started her career here in South Plainfield as a long-term substitute in special education. After one full year in that role, she transitioned into a full-day kindergarten position. And unfortunately, after that year, she was transferred to Riley School, where she was incredibly talented and did a lot of great work for the kids. But she missed us way too much. So this year, she came back to Kennedy School, and now she's our third-grade teacher. So we're very proud to have Catherine here at our school. Most importantly, because she's not only a wonderful teacher, but she's an awesome colleague, very supportive with the rest of the team here we have in Kennedy, helps in any way she can, volunteering her time with the PTSO events or just managing our classrooms in a very productive way. So we're very proud of them, this Winter, in our school. The students are very lucky to have her. Her classrooms are always included with lots of fun activities, a very keen sense of, sense of humor. And she certainly continues to do wonderful things every day in her classes. Despite what level a child's at, she is incredibly talented in the way that she motivates her children and really works hard to get them to the level that they are capable. So we're proud to have Catherine. Very, very proud that she has maintained her tenure status. Congratulations, Catherine. Job well done. We look forward to having many, many years ahead of us working together and you impacting the lives of our children of South Plainfield. Congratulations again.
Good evening, everyone. Here at the South Plainfield Middle School, we have four teachers receiving their tenure certificate tonight. The first person that I'd like to recognize is Ms. Dara Sessa. Ms. Sessa came to Middle School in October of 2017. She is one of our seventh-grade mathematics teachers. Over her time here at the middle school, she has demonstrated a comprehensive knowledge of her subject area and that she is aware of how children learn. She has developed lessons to meet the differentiated learning styles and levels of the students in her classroom. Ms. Sessa is a great asset to the South Plainfield Middle School family, and I'm very happy to present her with her tenure certificate tonight. The next person I'd like to recognize tonight is Ms. Casey Ann Costella. Ms. Costella came to the middle school in February of 2018. She is one of our eighth-grade science teachers here at the middle school. Ms. Costella develops science lessons that are innovative and motivate her students to want to learn. She uses hands-on materials and manipulatives to stimulate her students' participation in her lesson. Ms. Costella maintains high expectations for all of her students and works hard to achieve those expectations. Ms. Costella is a great asset to the South Plainfield Middle School family. Very happy to present her with her tenure certificate tonight. The third person that I'd like to recognize tonight is Mr. Nicholas DeLucia. Mr. DeLucia came to the middle school in March of 2018. He is one of our special education teachers. Over the last three years, I've had the opportunity to work with Mr. DeLucia. And during that time, he has developed into a talented educator that strives to better himself and help his students learn. He is always willing to learn and improve, and it shows in his classroom, where students are motivated and engaged and are truly interested in what is being taught. Mr. DeLucia is a great asset to the South Plainfield Middle School family. And I'm very happy to present him with his tenure certificate tonight. The last person that I'd like to acknowledge tonight is Ms. Catherine Howell. Ms. Howell came to the South Plainfield School District in September of 2018. She currently is working as the middle school chorus instructor and the elementary orchestra and instructional music teacher. Under Ms. Howell's direction and instruction, the middle school chorus program has grown, and our students' progress has been tremendous. It is evident in a great deal. Planning and preparation goes into each of her lessons and student performances. Ms. Howell is a great asset to the South Plainfield School District and families. And I'm very happy to present her with her tenure certificate tonight. Thank you, everybody, and have a great evening.
Hello, I'm Joanne Ryan, Director of Special Services, PK to six. I am here to recommend Caitlin Lepton for tenure in the South Plainfield Public Schools. Caitlin has been instrumental in the development and success of our project Inspire of Franklin School. She is one of our child study team's social workers who has the natural ability to understand children and expresses the genuine love to help others. Ms. Lepton has set high expectations as a social worker and is an example of a true professional. She has built and established strong professional relationships with students, staff, and families. Caitlin is an asset to our special services department and the South Plainfield Public Schools. I congratulate Caitlin on receiving her tenure this year. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Joanne Ryan, Director of Special Services, PK to six. I am proud to recommend Jillian Velmer for tenure in the South Plainfield Public Schools. As a passionate, school-based speech therapist, Jillian has demonstrated her love for speech, education, and children. Jillian has the natural ability to work with children. She has established a genuine and positive rapport with her students that encourages them to work learning. Dr. Velmer has volunteered for presentations for the CPAC, Special Education Advisory Council. She received her doctorate at King University in 2019 while working as a speech therapist in the South Plainfield Public Schools. Dr. Velmer is on lifelong learn and transmits that commitment to her students, colleagues, and parents. Jillian is an asset to our special services department and the South Plainfield Public Schools. Congratulations, Jillian.
Good evening, I'm Joanne Ryan, Director of Special Services, PK to six. I am proud to recommend Megan Longieri for tenure in the South Plainfield Public Schools. Megan is an occupational therapist as part of our related services team at Kennedy School. She has worked in our Step Program, our General League Program, and as part of our preschool evaluation team. What I am most impressed about Megan is her child-centered focus and professional attitude. She always puts the child's best interests at the forefront of her decision-making. Congratulations, Megan, on your tenure.
This is Andrew Brandon, I'm the Director of Special Services for grades seven through 12 in the South Plainfield School District. It's an honor to be here with you tonight to recommend two individuals for tenure. The first individual I would like to recommend for tenure is Ms. Katie Hayes. Ms. Katie Hayes has had exceptional job performance since she started in the South Plainfield School District. She serves as school psychologist and case manager and has supported the preschool program for students with disabilities, as well as Roosevelt School. Ms. Hayes has contributed greatly to the procedures in the department and has provided information to allow us to provide excellent evaluation protocols for our students. Congratulations on your tenure, Ms. Hayes. The second person that I would like to recommend for tenure this evening is Ms. Ariela Cardy. The second person I would like to recommend for tenure this evening is Ms. Ariela Cardy. Ms. Cardy is an occupational therapist that has worked at both Franklin and Grant Schools. She's contributed greatly to our autism program, as well as our preschool program for students with disabilities. She has conducted thorough research to programs and services that greatly have benefited our students and continues to collaborate greatly with teachers, staff, and administration. Ms. Cardy is certainly an asset to the South Plainfield School District. Congratulations, Ms. Cardy.
Congratulations, Jessica. I'm so excited about your tenureship in the South Plainfield District. It is such an honor to work with you and have you as a Riley family member. You continue to go above and beyond your duties, for students, the parents, the staff, and the district as a whole. I am truly inspired by your knowledge, your work ethic, your enthusiasm, and voice, Bill. Continue to shine like the diamond you are. Congratulations.
Good evening. Tonight, I have the pleasure of congratulating all of the South Plainfield faculty and support staff who have earned tenure. You've already heard from their principals and directors who have worked with these dedicated educators over the past four years. They are all amazing people who continue to dedicate their careers to creating the best possible learning environment for the students of South Plainfield, and we are very lucky to have them. I also have two outstanding administrators to congratulate on earning tenure this evening as well. First, Mr. Andrew Brandon. Mr. Brandon has earned tenure in his role as Director of Special Services for our district. Over the past four years, Mr. Brandon's contributions to his department and our school district have been immeasurable. He works tirelessly to move our special education department forward with new and innovative programs. with new and innovative programs, including Project Inspire, Tiger Farms, and the Transition Academy. As the director, he has always made himself available to parents and guardians whenever they had questions or concerns regarding their child or a program in the district. Mr. Brandon works alongside the faculty and staff to ensure they are supported and well-trained to meet the needs of our students. As we continue to watch the special education department grow, Mr. Brandon has grown our programs as well. In the past four years alone, the special education department has increased the number of programs offered throughout the district and expanded the number of self-contained classrooms to include seventeen self-contained classrooms, pre-K through twelve, and five specially designated programs within our special education department. And this number does not include the numerous pull-out resources and in-class support classrooms that run throughout the district daily. Mr. Brandon continues to work to create a welcoming and inclusive educational setting for our special education population while keeping in mind the students' individual needs. Although Mr. Brandon's duties have shifted a bit this year, our district, including myself, have come to rely on his expertise in special education as well as his always calm demeanor when dealing with a difficult situation. A personal note, I have the pleasure of working with Mr. Brandon daily and oftentimes well into the evening, ensuring our students have what they need to succeed. Mr. Brandon is always accommodating and willing to go above and beyond to make certain the special education students have the supports they require to achieve their educational goals, ensuring whatever decisions are made are made in the best interest of the student. Mr. Brandon, congratulations on earning tenure in the South Plainfield School District. You are an asset to our district and an advocate for our students. Next, I have the pleasure of congratulating Mr. Sam Fiera on earning tenure in the position of Director of Guidance for the South Plainfield School District. Now, I realize Mr. Fiera has taken another position in the district as principal of Roosevelt School, which he makes sure to tell me whenever he sees me how much he loves his new position. He makes sure to follow that up, but it wasn't an easy decision to leave the guidance department. In his humble way, Mr. Fiera credits his success as their success, saying, "I was the head of a really great group of counselors." Over the past four years, Mr. Fiera revamped the guidance department, adding many programs to support our students and family. His creative ideas included ongoing student assemblies on timely subject matters such as substance abuse, anxiety, and mindfulness, which continues throughout our district today. He welcomed the support of outside mental health experts opening a new path for students who were struggling to have extra support they needed during these past couple of very difficult years. He also focused on academic areas such as implementing the SAT Boot Camp, the risk assessment review, and adding to the dual-credit expansion program. Mr. Fiera worked to provide workshops for students, including financial aid for college and career and college readiness, while also chairing the immensely successful College and Career Fair, which had over a hundred colleges, businesses, and trades participating. I know I could go on and on about Mr. Fiera's numerous accomplishments, but I think we all know the real jewel of Mr. Fiera's charm is truly his personality. He relates to the students, parents, and guardians, making them feel comfortable while his colleagues admire his dedication and willingness to always lend a helping hand. I personally have come to rely on Mr. Fiera for several reasons, most notably as the sidekick to the many parent meetings helped during and after the pandemic, fielding at times over five hundred questions during one meeting alone. He handled them all with ease, and I can tell you, that's not an easy task. Mr. Fiera is a wonderful person, and we are lucky to have him serve as Director of Guidance over the past four and a half years. Now it's Roosevelt School who is lucky to have him as their principal. Mr. Fiera, congratulations on earning tenure in the South Plainfield School District. You are an asset to our district, and we are very lucky to have you. Thank you.
I'm going to ask all of the faculty and staff that earned tenure this evening to come up and join me at the podium, so we can all say congratulations by the board. We'll be handing out food for food home there later.
We have one last presentation this evening. Our high school students put together a video so we could highlight all of the wonderful happening at South Plainfield High School. So Mr. Costello is going to introduce the students to the video and what happened.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Tazi. So we've got a lot of great things going on at the high school. Again, congratulations, everybody, who received tenure this evening. As part of our inclusivity initiatives throughout the high school, one thing we wanted to make sure we recognized right out of the gates was Spanish Heritage Month, which took place from the fifteenth of September through the fifteenth of October. Throughout the school, there was a number of things going on throughout the foreign language classes, throughout our history classes. So what we have here is actually just a brief overview of some of the things and activities that we went through. We have the three members and executive board of our National Spanish Honor Society, as well as the Tiger TV segment that was also in honor of Spanish Heritage Month. And I'll let the video kind of go for itself. A fun few activities in there, and things went well throughout the building. Well, thank you, everybody, and enjoy.
Buenas noches. Yo soy Emily Levis.
Yo soy Naomi Lopez.
Y yo soy Deborah Lopez.
And we're all members of the Spanish Honor Society, me being president. Now, each year, Americans celebrate National Hispanic Heritage Month, El Mes Nacional de la Hazaña Hispana, from September fifteenth through October fifteenth, by celebrating the contributions and impacts of both Hispanics and Latinos in the U.S. and those American citizens whose ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, Central, and South America. This is a time to celebrate the achievements, histories, traditions, and cultural diversity of Hispanic and Latino Americans whose heritage is rooted in twenty-one Latin American countries and territories.
The Hispanic Heritage of Purvis began in nineteen sixty-eight as Hispanic Heritage Week under President Lyndon B. Johnson, and it was expanded in nineteen eighty-eight with President Ronald Reagan to cover a thirty-day period. This year, the National Council of Hispanic Employment Program members, managers, announces the theme for 2022, Unidos, is inclusivity for a stronger nation, which encourages us to ensure that all voices are represented and welcome in order to help build a stronger communities and a stronger nation.
Growing up, it was easy to see that being Hispanic in South Plainfield was being part of my minority. My family was the only Latin origin family on our street, and in the school, there was only a handful of other Hispanic students. One of the most emotive moments was in my seventh grade English class. We were all reading a book, and one of the Hispanic characters began to speak in Spanish, and everyone, including the teacher, turned to look at me. It was in that moment where I realized that I was the only Spanish person in the room. The moment is humorous, and I always laugh about it. A lot has changed since then. South Plainfield is seeing a lot more Hispanic, Latino citizens, and students, and our town is becoming more diverse, which can only lead to good things, such as creating a more understanding and accepting environment. Gracias por si que tengamos una noche. Thank you.
Good morning, South Plainfield. My name is Shannon Authority. This is Izzy Marin. And today, we're going to be talking to you about Hispanic Heritage Month called Make a Bananas. My mom's from Panama.
My dad is from Colombia.
Dog, what? Okay, so Hispanic Heritage Month started out as a week in nineteen sixty-eight, but then later expanded to a month in nineteen eighty-eight. I'm doing actually really good with you all.
Yeah.
Look at my front. Right? So now, we are going to try to name all twenty Hispanic countries in thirty seconds.
Three, two, one.
Panama.
Argentina.
Colombia.
Venezuela.
Dominican Republic.
Honduras.
Cuba. Oh, you're right.
Uruguay.
El Salvador.
Costa Rica.
Costa Rica. Mexico. Spain.
USA.
USA.
Yes.
Oh, yeah. Guatemala. Ecuador. Chile.
Chile.
Argentina.
Maybe. Basically, Hispanic is when the country is like its language is Spanish. So that includes South American countries and Spain. Latino is when the country is in Latin America. So that doesn't include Spain. And also, it's like Brazil, where they speak Portuguese, but they're not Hispanic because they don't speak Spanish, but they're Latino because they're in Latin America. So that's the difference between Latino and Hispanic. So we have all the empanadas here in the bag, and we're going to fry them in the fryer at three hundred and seventy-five degrees.
You know, I was going to say thank you, Mr. Costello, but there aren't any empanadas for us to try, so.
The Tiger TV crew, they didn't stand a chance.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on now, could I have a motion to approve curriculum one through nine?
I'll move. Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Gianakis?
Yes.
Mr. Pender?
Yes.
Mr. Cecilberg?
Yes.
Mr. Castillo?
Yes.
Mr. Penise?
Yes. Do you have a motion on policies one to two?
I'll move. Second.
Roll call, please.
I have discussion.
Oh, discussion, sorry.
Yes, for policy eight, four, two, zero, emergency crisis situation, I think that this is an excellent policy. I also attended a seminar with the state police two weeks ago, and they are instituting a mandated threat assessment task force. This has been established by the state, and it's for all public schools. All teachers, staff, and administrators shall be trained to keep our students safe. In light of the fact that a previous member of the Board of Ed was unable to help two students who came before the board because they didn't feel safe, I recommended that Board of Ed members all throughout the state be trained in the Threat Assessment Task Force, which will be a part of this policy.
Is that in our policy, that board members are going to be trained?
No, that was a suggestion to the state police.
Oh, okay.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bowe?
Yes.
Or is it Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Gianakis?
Yes.
Mr. Pender?
Yes.
Mr. Cecilberg?
Yes.
Mr. Castillo?
Yes.
Mr. Penise?
Yes. Personnel, any details?
I'll move. Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bowe?
Yes, abstaining on eleven D, number forty-eight. That's my spouse. She doesn't like you.
Mrs. Boyle?
She doesn't like you. Yes.
Mr. Gianakis?
Yes.
Mr. Pender?
Yes.
Mr. Cecilberg?
Yes.
Mr. Castillo?
Yes.
Mr. Penise?
Yes. Finance.
I'll move. Second.
Oh. This one is up to none. You stop. Hold up. You stop. Finance. There was a pause? Okay, there was, um, there was two forty-eights.
Yeah, it's all right.
So he's only abstaining on his wife and not the other one?
Yes.
Yes. Just go home.
Okay, now we're all agreeing where you're abstaining there, then.
Which one? One or the other, too.
Okay, that's right. Finance, you got one through nine. You have a motion.
I'll move. Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Boyle?
On page eight, abstaining on check one, four, four, three, two, and under the attorneys' bills list, the multiple attorneys who are involved in all the different legal aspects.
Thank you. Mr. Gianakis?
Yes.
Mr. Pender?
Yes.
Mr. Cecilberg?
Yes.
Mr. Castillo?
Yes.
Mr. Penise?
Yes. Public comments, any items? Please just state your name and address, please.
My name is Scott Miller, Nineteen Day Drive. I heard mentioned earlier in meetings about the day of service, and that preliminary planning is starting. I wanted to make a recommendation that maybe reach out to the PTOs at the different various schools. Since we end up doing a lot of assistance, either by parental help, gathering supplies, paying for things that are needed, it would be helpful for our organizations to have a little bit of insight into what's being planned, and maybe we can assist a little further, make a bigger and better event than we had last year.
Perfect, thanks for that suggestion. And the PTO always are so supportive to us. They actually helped us with a lot of, um, a lot of the supplies that we needed. They donated a few things, but don't worry, we'll be reaching out again.
That's great. And actually, speaking of the PTOs, what is the technology policy as far as the PTOs go? One of the things I'm noticing, a lot of our meetings now are being done in person and virtually. And as a matter of fact, the grand school meeting last week, yesterday, had thirty-two people between online and in person. I haven't seen that in the years that I've been doing this so far. Some of the buildings do not have great signal to our phones. And for example, last year with the middle school, they tried to do things virtually, and it failed all the time because you just can't get a signal to a phone in the middle school library. And I was wondering, is there a way for us to petition to get some kind of access to Wi-Fi? Several years ago, there was a guest access that we were able to use, and we could get things that we needed. For example, I do the treasury work for the schools. All of my information is on my computer. It's hard to get that when the signal is not working.
Right.
So it would be helpful for the organizations if we had some way to get a login on our own to use the Wi-Fi for our meetings that we have in the building.
Well, we would be able to give you access to a guest network. We just, you know, let Mr. Wellin know when, you know, when you're having the meeting. We could go ahead and do that for you. There is a problem with the, with the phone. It actually only happens with the phone. It doesn't happen with the computers. But we can go ahead and get your access. You just need to let us know or let Mr. Wellin know what night you're going to be there for the meetings.
Yeah, because the more parents that get involved in these things, the more we can do for the children at schools.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? Seeing the board member comments, I'll just take my, I'm going first. So I don't have to say, oh, yeah, what everybody else said. I just want to congratulate all the tenure teachers. It's, it's, it's great seeing, seeing what they, seeing them there and seeing what they've done. I mean, in this day and age and how education is going, you know, to be able to have the enthusiasm and care about the kids and go four years when everything you hear now is really tough out there for educators and getting educators, I just want to congratulate all of them. Well deserved. Now, the students, the Girl Scouts, I monitored one of those pins because I definitely need one all the time the night before a meeting. But it was just tremendous to see, see what they did and all our students. Now, this is kind of what it's all about. You know, a lot of times, you know, this gets overshadowed by other things that are going on, but this is what it's all about, and that's why we're here. You know, to support our staff, our great staff, and so that they can support the students. Okay, now, you go. You go ahead. Okay, move on. This way. Go ahead. Me? Yeah. I got yelled at before. Just a couple of quick things. I just want to welcome our new guidance director, Jacqueline Gabliardo. Did I say that right?
Yes, you did. Thank you.
I just want to welcome her, and I know Tom said this last week, but I want to thank Vanna Curlew for filling in for the last couple of weeks, month, whatever it was, in that position. I know it's not an easy job to do dual- I know it's not an easy job to do dual work, and you did a great job. So, thank you for filling in for those couple of weeks and handling that department. So, thank you. I also want to thank Sarah. She does a great job when she comes in here as our student representative. It's not easy sitting up here as an adult, let alone a high school student, and talking in front of. And there was a pretty good crowd in here tonight, but she really handles herself very well. She's very well spoken, and she does a great job. So, I just, she's not hearing that, but I just wanted to say thank you to her.
You're just here in front of her and the entire student body.
She's good, huh? Yeah, she's got a great personality. She's really, she does it really well. And those kids with those worried dolls, that's such a great, great idea or thing to do because, you know, one thing that they said was, you know, they sit in front of live guidance conferences, and they have to talk about their problems. And you know what? Sometimes it's not easy to talk to a real person about your problems. But now you have a doll, and, eh, you know, not a bad idea. I think it's a good thing. I do.
So, that's one for PO?
Right, yeah. So, I like that. That was, that's a really great, great thing, was those worried dolls are a great idea. I want to congratulate everyone who got their tenure tonight. I really do. I think, you know, as you look at, there's twenty, twenty-one people got tenure tonight. So, I just want to congratulate them all and say thank you for your service. A special shout out to Sam Fiera. Took me four years to learn his name. It's not Ferraro. It's Fiera.
It's Fiera.
Fiera. It's a tough one, man, that last name. But he really did a great job with that guidance department that turned it around. So, I just wanted a special shout out to him. And one last thing, I heard you say you had, what, thirty-something members attend your PTO meeting?
Yesterday, yeah.
That's, what school is that?
This is Grant School.
It's great, Norma.
We're used to having like five board members and maybe one parent.
Yeah, so that's, that's really great.
There were about a dozen people in the building, and then the rest were all, we set up a Zoom.
Well, just keep that, that's really great to see that kind of participation. You know, it's been missing for a long time, so keep that up. Great work. Thank you. Everybody have a very happy Halloween.
You done?
I'm done. You going to talk to anybody else in the audience?
Might. I don't know. But he didn't mention Wiggins. I was going to talk to you because Greek Wary beats.
Uh, yeah.
I didn't.
This might be repetitive, but also, Jacqueline Cabriardo to the district, I'm sure you're, yeah. Well, you did a lot of great things here. I also wanted to thank the Girl Scouts for their project, and not only for the troop project that they did, but also that they were taking care of their students and their peers and recognizing the need for an item like that. Also, a congrats to all the staff members that we recognize for tenure tonight and Muri. Your contributions will always make our district stronger and are greatly appreciated by everybody. And this is our last meeting, I think, before the election. So, we know it's kind of late in town this year, but just because there's not as many names on the ballot this year, especially for the council races, please go on, Boat. There's important statewide, countywide, townwide. And I think there's a question or two on there, too. So, even if there's just one category on the ballot, exercise your right to vote. Thank you.
I would like to say congratulations to all of our teachers who obtained tenure. And I also want to extend a congratulations to all of our fall sports teams in the district, especially the football team, who is off to, well, well into an incredible season, remaining undefeated. And then, thank you to Girl Scout Troop six, five, zero, zero, eight for the worried dolls. I'm going to echo those sentiments by saying how important it is for them to consider their peers during this time, coming back to school and resuming in-person activity to the, towards the tail end of the pandemic, I'll say. And then, I want to, uh, maneuver, yeah? And I want to pivot, um, I want to just pivot onto a different note by extending my condolences to the Jones family, both Eric and Erin, and to the family for their, for the passing of their son, EJ Jones, who passed away this past Friday. EJ graduated from South Plainfield High School in twenty twenty, right after me. EJ was a brother, a son, and a friend. Most importantly, EJ was a bright and polite and kind-hearted individual that brought joy to every room he walked in. I had the privilege of playing football and wrestling with EJ, and he was like a brother to me. My heart goes out to the entire family and all of his friends. The home-going services will be held this weekend at Jebkins Colonial Funeral Home in Plainfield. Beating will be held from ten AM to twelve PM with services to follow. Truly a great young man who will be missed. Thank you.
Yes, congratulations to all our tenured teachers and staff, which included Brittany Scott. Great job to the Girl Scouts and the worried dolls and the presentation that they gave at the podium. Good luck to our new guidance director. Welcome. And thank you to Mrs. Curlew for stepping up and helping out. And thank you to Sarah for being here and giving your great presentations and being a part of this day, and happy Diwali, and blessed Spanish Heritage Month. Thanks.
Thank you. Keith?
Just the first CPAC meeting of the year was scheduled for next Thursday at six-thirty at the high school library. So, anyone with special needs children, great opportunity to come in there and learn a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you. Guess I'll land it.
I want to reiterate everything that was said up here. Congratulations to the teachers and staff for their tenure. The girls did a great job. I mean, what grade are they? They're troop?
Sixth.
Sixth grade. I mean, you go up there and speak like that in public, I commend them. I mean, that's great to see. And the, she's going to cheer up tomorrow that the children, the girls up there, and they can have bananas and having a good time. And, you know, it's good to see them in school, having fun and learning something at the same time. That's what it's about. So, kudos to them. And that's it. Go Yankees.
Did it start?
Ten minutes.
Okay, I would first have motion for adjournment.
I'll move.
Second.
All the favorite?
I have motion.
adjourned. Motion to adjourn is adjourned.